Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone to tonight's March 18, 2025 City Council Meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. As a notice of record, Councilmember Bob Ward is absent from tonight's meeting. And as noted, we do have all other members present to have a quorum, and we have excused his absence from tonight's meeting. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me, please. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
The City Council has had responsibility to try to agree to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any conflicts concerned.
Done. Our next item is approval of minutes, namely February 4, 2025 City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. I would like to request that new business item number three be removed and placed on the April 14, 2025 work session for additional time to review applications, if that would be okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that request.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our agenda is adopted. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following item, please let us know. Item A, to approve budget amendment 2025-42 for the Recreation and Parks Department to allocate funds received from donations to the Burlington Youth Council, youth programs, park and play, and memorial projects. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda item.
Question.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We do have two public hearings this evening. If you are particularly interested in a public hearing, you will have an opportunity for public comments on that particular item. Item one, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider a request to rezone property from medium-density residential or MDR to mixed-use limited use, MXLU. The property is located on the west side of Camp Road, roughly 450 feet north of the intersection of Vaughan Road and Camp Road, addressed as 424 Camp Road and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 139532. There was a public hearing held on February 4, 2025, enclosed by City Council. Consideration of this item was tabled from February 4, 2025 City Council Meeting. So at this time, we will recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Jamie?
Good evening, everyone. So this item was presented to you at your February 4 City Council meeting. The item was continued. There has been no modifications or edits, changes as the request of the applicant. They are still seeking a limited use to mixed-use district for, I think it's approximately 30 uses out of the entire list of permitted uses under the UDO.
Any questions for Jamie on this item? And David, the public hearing was closed. So there's no...
It was, and all we spoke to was your determination.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Jamie on this item? I know council had some questions when we tabled this item, so I'm assuming everyone's had time to...
I actually had a chance, Mr. Mayor, to go out and visit this site, and I'm fine.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Public hearing has been previously closed on February 4. At this time, we will entertain a motion from council as indicated on the yellow sheet.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from medium-density residential, MDR, to mixed-use limited use, MXLU. The property is located on the west side of Camp Road, roughly 450 feet north of the intersection of Vaughan Road and Camp Road, addressed as 424 Camp Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 139532. Motion is based upon the consistency of proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The request is compatible with the land use plan. Development of this site for residential purposes would be in character with the surrounding development in the area and provide greater opportunities for infield development. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area, and the proposal is consistent with the future land use designation. Any future expansions would be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let the record reflect that there was one opposition. Item number two, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider a request to rezone property from medium-density residential, MDR, to general business limited use, GBLU. The properties are located on the south side of Garden Road with frontage also on Westview Terrace. These parcels consist of Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 112636, 112637, 112656, and 112639. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening, everyone. This slide basically just summarizes the application, the history of the application itself in terms of the initial request by the applicant. The property is highlighted here in teal. It is four parcels, and the request is to change the zoning from medium-density residential to general business limited use. There were a number of changes that occurred during the process of this application. Back in November, the request was originally for 67 uses within the general business zoning district. Then in December, the item was modified down to 39 uses, and one of the parcels was removed. Then the applicant reduced the request again to multifamily only as part of their limited use rezoning request. The City Council heard this item in January, January 21. It was remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they considered the application, the revised application again, and recommended in favor of this rezoning request. So the matter has been now re-noticed and is in front of you in a proper formation for your consideration again.
Okay. Just for clarification, some of the changes that were made after the original planning and zoning, so it was remanded back to them in its current format, is that correct? With just one...
Correct. That's right.
Any questions for Jamie?
The applicant is in the audience, in case you have questions for them as well.
Okay. That sounds good. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for public comments on this item. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this particular item? Mr. Moffett?
If I could, I would just make a few brief remarks.
Absolutely.
I know we've been through this several times at this point, but didn't want to highlight that in a little more detail what's transpired since this matter was remanded to P&amp;Z.
Okay.
It did go before P&amp;Z. The Planning and Zoning Commission, back on its February 24 meeting, whether you rewind. My name is Ryan Moffett. I'm with the Vernon Law Firm. We're located at 522 South Lexington Avenue. I'm here representing the applicant, Dave Morton Enterprises. And just to touch on a couple of items that came up at the last hearing before council and then subsequently addressed at planning and zoning, of course, when it did return to Planning and Zoning Commission on the 24th, as a limited use, single-use request, multifamily residential use only, it did receive the favorable recommendation for approval on a four-to-one basis, continues to have staff's recommendation for approval. Mr. Brown, Chad Huffine, on behalf of Mr. Morton, presented that request and reiterated its consistency with the city's comprehensive land use plan, which calls for this area to consist of and accommodate uses of a regional commercial character between Garden Road and Interstate 4085, and then which later transitions to more residential uses to the northwest and northwest of Garden Road. It is the highest and best use of this property, and it's going to be anticipated for an age-targeted product, 55-plus, 54-unit, single-building, full access, one access, full access off of Garden Road. And there were a few questions that came up from neighbors that you all presented, that staff has addressed, but again, to confirm, it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Parking on neighborhood roads is not an issue. There are parking requirements within the Unified Development Ordinance that will ensure sufficient parking for residents of this community and their guests. There were several meetings between Mr. Huffine, who has been on this project since the very beginning, and the neighbors, beginning back in December of 2024. I know that there was some conversation about some of the development standards and the details that would be associated with this, particularly with respect to traffic, but also buffering. I would like to note for the record, and as far as separation of uses and perimeter buffering, when you have a general business use abutting a medium-density residential use, the UDO requires a type D opaque buffer. And just so that everyone's aware, that is the most intense buffer requirement that the UDO provides for. There is nothing more intensive or than that when it comes to separation of uses within the UDO. So I just wanted to make those points. Those were issues that have come up in the prior hearings. There again, since we've had the opportunity to take this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a single-use request, their position on it has changed, and they have recommended its approval. And our request before you this evening is the same, to approve this on a single-use, multifamily residential-only request. I'm happy to answer any questions. If there are members of the public that have comments, I would appreciate the opportunity to respond if...
Absolutely. Any questions for...
Thank you.
Mr. Moffett?
Thanks for having me. The buffering issue, I appreciate that.
Yes, I am. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else on this side that would like to speak on this particular item? Yes, sir. Welcome. Please state your name and address for our City Clerk.
Good evening. My name is Chad Mills. I live at 1253 Fairview Drive. Once again, as residents and neighbors of Fairview Estates, we are here to petition the City Council to please thoughtfully consider the impact that the proposed rezoning request, if approved, would have upon our long-established neighborhood. We understand that progress in development will come, and in certain ways, has already come to our area. We are not against development. We just desire that the development remain consistent with the founding of our neighborhood almost 65 years ago. We are not against multifamily housing, but multifamily housing can be developed within the current zoning structure of medium-density residential. Our neighborhood was established long before the city of Burlington decided to annex us into the city limits, and the properties included in the rezoning request have always been a part of that original neighborhood plan. When those properties were purchased, they were purchased with the understanding that they were zoned medium-density residential. Let them be developed within the current zoning structure. In addition to these sentiments, if these properties were to be approved as zoned general business limited use, there is no site plan requirement for this type of zoning. We have seen nothing on paper, no binding documents, nothing but promises and pinky swears. As a neighborhood of 65 years, we deserve the right of proper screening and other amenities that would remain consistent with the establishment of Fairview Estates. An example of proper screening is currently in place between Boone Station Drive and Fairview Estates. It's an earthen berm that does an excellent job of keeping the privacy of our neighborhood from the development next door that is Alamance Crossing. In conclusion, while we appreciate Mr. Morton and Mr. Huffine scaling back the uses of the proposed rezoning request to one use, namely multifamily residential, the neighbors of Fairview Estates feel that more could be done concerning transparency and having a required site plan. Both of these could be accomplished within planned development instead of general business limited use. Thank you for considering our concerns and the future of Fairview Estates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills. Anyone else from this side would like to speak? Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes. I think Beverly's got, or Haley's got the timer this evening.
I practice, so I hope I can make it. Good evening. My name is Charles Moffett. I live at 1233 Westview Terrace. I appreciate the opportunity to address City Council regarding this limited use rezoning request, which I understand will increase the allowed density of the property in questions, properties in question, to more than a fivefold, 13 units to 68 units. I have asked multiple times why they don't build something that is already allowed under the current zoning. The only answer I have heard is there isn't enough money to be made, which I find disappointing, but expected. The staff recommendations states future use of the property should complement the land use pattern of the area and be context-sensitive to the adjacent residential neighborhood. I ask, how can a commercial apartment complex with up to 68 units that's going to be shoehorned into the middle of this well-established neighborhood for 65 years be considered context-sensitive, or serve as a buffer, which is also included in the staff recommendation? I don't understand how an apartment complex can be considered a buffer. During the last planning and zoning hearing, multiple pinky promises were made by the applicants, including that the apartments will be high-end for senior residents with lots of amenities. There will be no access to Westview Terrace, plenty of parking and ample buffering will be provided, and that full-turning movement onto Garden Road would be pursued. While these things sound really great, there are absolutely no guarantees any of them would ever come to fruition under this limited use rezoning request. The high-end senior apartments could turn into low-income or student-centric housing. The buffers could end up being just a little bit of space with a few trees that may or may not live. The ample parking could be inadequate and result in apartment residents of visitors parking on our lawns. I understand that approval of a full-turning movement onto Garden Road is not likely, as it's already inadequate for the current amount of traffic. The alternative right-in, right-out entry would present a huge issue for our little neighborhood. We already have a significant issue with the number of cars using Fairview as a cut-through from Boone Station Road to Garden Road to avoid the traffic signal. The right-in, right-out entry will cause, I'm guessing, about half of all the traffic. That's all the residents, the visitors, the Amazon deliveries, the food deliveries. Half of them are going to end up looping through our neighborhood, the opposite direction, creating the potential for head-on collisions and a blind curve and rendering our neighborhood unsafe for an evening walk. There are too many unanswered questions and a lack of details to approve this limited use rezoning request. Please deny this request. I understand that the applicant can reapply under the planned development process and show us what they want to build and actually be held accountable for the details. My neighbors, wife, and I have become de facto stakeholders in this endeavor. Our skin in the game consists of lower property values, dangerous traffic, unsanitary disruptive dumpsters, sight lighting that will never be turned off, and urban sprawl on our doorsteps. We have to trust you, our elected leaders, to make this decision, which will hopefully be to deny the rezoning. How do I do?
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Luis Perez. My family's lived at 3210 Garden Road for 38 years. The council, this council and the zoning and planning commission has heard numerous times for nearly half a year now from residents who've had to juggle their lives to be here and make all these different meetings, all the reasons why this nebulous rezoning request is a bad idea. I also want to know, why is there a rezoning sign on Fairview Drive, which has no reason, none of these properties are on Fairview. Why is there a rezoning sign there? I don't know. I'm just asking. Besides the looming issues you've already heard about, traffic problems, noise pollution, garbage lithering, increased safety risks, wrecks in our front yards, and of course, damage to residential property value, all of which decrease the quality of life and the safety of our residents, as well as those around us, perhaps the biggest issue I see is that also this rezoning is incompatible with the city's own future land use plan. This is not the highest and best use of this land. The long-term comprehensive plan calls for regional commercial. Why would you build a bunch of housing units here when you're going to have a conflict down the road when you want to use this for heavy commercial use? I understand this is a very valuable piece of land, right by the highway, and that's an issue for down the road, but in the meantime, the lives of people will be destroyed right now. A rezoning here and now means essentially that you value transient residents who have no stake in Burlington, no roots here, no love or loyalty for this city, who will simply sleep here while working in RTP Durham or Greensboro, over real Burlington residents who have deep roots here, going back 65-plus years, contribute by way of property taxes, create arts and culture, and live, work, and play here, and yes, vote in elections. The parties involved in this rezoning request, from the landowners to the developers, have not been communicative with residents from the start. The communication we've had with them is when they've been compelled to by the zoning commission. Since this issue was remanded to Z&amp;P last time, there's been no communication from the developers or any other representatives with any neighbors, not a bit. I just want to make that clear for the record. There's lack of details. Like you said, there's no site plans. We don't know where entrances and exits would go, you know, how many trees would be clear-cut, as will state that they could build residential units here right now and walk away with a profit. But no, this is not about that. It's been about nothing but greed and greed alone. The engineer here, Mr. Huffine, has said, and I heard him say this, that David Morton wanted to build whatever would make him the most money. So...
Is that my timer? It is. Okay. So I respectfully ask you to reject this request until we get a better plan. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Lucas Perez. I live at 3210 Garden Road as well. My dad and I live there on the corner. We've been present and engaged throughout this process ever since this rezoning request came up back in October, in our steadfast deposition to this project. And I think I can speak for all the residents here and all the ones that weren't able to attend tonight. This has been a long process. Not everyone's been able to make every meeting. I believe I can speak and say we're more opposed to this project now than when we were back in October when this began. And I think the fact that we are completely unified in our opposition really speaks to the way this has been handled since the whole thing began back in October. And I really want to speak to what the reality is going to be like living next to this construction zone if this is approved, because respectfully for everyone else in this room, it's probably not going to impact your lives very much, but this is life-changing for us, something we have to live next to every day, what it's going to be like living next to a construction zone, noise and dust, dirt, people, who knows what else, what that's going to be like. And you've heard it also mentioned as well, this isn't even consistent with our neighborhood. A lot of thought and consideration has been given to what this looks like down the road for the Burlington. You know, we have to blend this land into what's compatible with what's around us. No consideration has been given to what's most consistent with our neighborhood, because we've been here a long time, and we've been very tolerant of change and progress, and we are not opposed to those things. As you've heard, you can look around our neighborhood and see those things. We've been extremely tolerant of those things. But this is different because it's in our neighborhood. You can see the map. This is on our side of the road now. And that's why there's so much strong opposition to this, because it's going to completely change the makeup of what our neighborhood is and alter the way we live day to day. And the last thing I want to talk about is the home that we live in. My grandparents moved here in 1966, immigrated here from Argentina, lived in this community 50 years. And my grandpa spent 50 years, at one point, he was working three jobs. He had two... And my grandpa spent 50 years, at one point he was working three jobs, he had two kids, he had a young wife, went to night school, learned a second language, started a business. My grandma lived here 40 years with him and worked for textile mills and knitting mills all across this town, and they worked hard. And that house, it's not on Lake MacIntosh, and it's not in a gated community, but it represents every single thing that they came here to work for. And that's everything that's going to go down the toilet if this is approved. And if you go up and down our neighborhood, every single house has a story like that, because that's the kind of people that live here, hard-working people that care about the city of Burlington. All we've asked for from the beginning is a little bit of transparency, something that's consistent with what's in our neighborhood now, and to preserve a little bit of the dignity and privacy that we have left. So, thanks for hearing me tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
I have some, packed some information for you. While she's handing those out, my name is Angela Mopet. I live at 1233 Westview Terrace, directly next to where this is going to happen.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
This is a packet of images to give you a better idea of what we're looking at right in our neighborhood. And as you can tell, we have not wavered in our opposition of a full-blown large development. We understand progress clearly, as it's been stated. It is all around us, and we are a long-established neighborhood, as we said. I'm a second-generation homeowner. The couple next to me is a third-generation homeowner in this neighborhood. So, the first image that you see shows our neighborhood outlined in blue. Please note the spacing among the residences and the layout. If this rezoning request is granted, the area outlined in dark orange, which is the parcel in question, is where this proposed development of 54 or up to 68-unit complex is set to be. Now, it's based on the allowed 24 units per acre. Currently, with the zoning staying as it is, up to 14 units could be put there, and they could have been put there 20 years ago when the first properties were first bought. So, these properties have been sitting empty for 20-plus years in some instances. We would like to, the next image is the proposed location from your work session on the 3rd of this month of where that building would sit within those properties. The next large image, it shows an aerial view of our neighborhood circled in blue with the little circle for the property in question. All of the yellow circles are apartment complexes within one mile of our neighborhood. The next image will show the potential traffic path should a full-access right-and-left turn out be allowed. If it's not, everyone that needs to turn left will have to go right out of that neighborhood, out of that complex, rather, into our neighborhood to come around to the light at Boone Station in order to make a left turn. We are a very small road, 20 feet wide. We are unmarked, no curb in the gutter. We do, we are not built to accommodate that amount of traffic. The yellow lines already show the pass-through traffic that we get from Alamance Crossing to avoid the light, and we have a large number of cars that come around our blind curve on the wrong side. The last image, if you don't mind really quickly, is from my front porch, and that is looking at the light in question. And I would like to ask you what you would like to look at when you stand on your front porch. So, we ask the City Council to please, please consider at the very least moving this to a planned development so that we know what's going to happen in our own neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this side? Anyone on this side? Would like to speak on this side? Jamie, could I ask you a couple of questions? Just so, I think there's a little confusion. I want to just be sure there is not any and that we are, we are clear on this. But one of the questions came up, why is there a rezoning sign on Fairview? Can you explain the process for how we, does next signage?
Yes. So, signage went, signage and the notification occurs at two different times. Initially, when an application goes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the signs get changed and are changed for City Council. So, I went back through my emails just recently, and the signs have gone up and down and up and down a number of times based upon the different, the different boards and commissions and the time periods, and it does look like it was, a sign was put up on Fair, on Fairview Drive in error. However, there were two signs still in the correct location on Garden Road and also at the end of Westview Terrace. So, I believe it was just a, it was just in error and, and a error at that.
And there are, there are distance requirements for putting those signs up as well? Is that, would you explain what that is?
Yes. Yeah. And so, each time letters go out, we utilize a 300-foot buffer around the properties in question, and that goes all the way to the edge of the property line. So, and that occurs both, again, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level and also at City Council.
And then another question is, there seems to be concern about they're not required to have a site plan, but for rezoning purposes, they do not. But can you explain our UDO, how it impacts the TRC, and what the ultimate restrictions would be held to? It is in writing. I mean, we do know that there are going to be restrictive requirements. Can you explain that?
Sure. So, in this type of application, a site plan is not required. This is a limited-use rezoning request. The applicant cannot state any commitments, nor can Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council impose added conditions. What I can say is that in 2019, the City Council adopted a Unified Development Ordinance, which was different than our zoning ordinance in the past, and, and that document increased and enhanced a number of our standards that were in place before. Specifically, where areas of concern were screening and buffering, so there were enhancements in terms of those sections of the code. And the buffering requirements that are in place are based upon one property zoning district compared to the properties that, that are adjacent to it. In addition, there are also landscaping requirements along the street, frontage, which would be along, for example, along Garden Road. The Unified Development Ordinance for Multifamily also has a number of design standards specifically related to that use type. I may have mentioned in the past that where a, where a multifamily abuts a single family but is greater than two stories and 18 feet, it would have to be 100 feet from that property line. You've heard, I guess, tonight that there's concession that there will be only...
I think you said one story.
No? Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I heard that. In any event, that is, that is another standard that would need to be met. There are also other standards in place at the UDO that deal specifically with parking, with the aesthetics of the building.
Lighting?
Lighting as well.
Buffering?
Landscaping, buffering, and certainly as part of the, the process, the review process, there is a technical review committee that is comprised of staff from all different disciplines as well as NCDOT. They would be reviewing the application and ensuring, you know, turning, they would, NCDOT would be the entity that would sort of dictate the, the turning aspects.
Did we not discuss last time about the buffers being 40 feet tall versus 30 feet, 30 feet?
Wide.
Wide, yeah.
Wide. Yep.
And the DOT is basically going to make the decision of the turning in and out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for answering. That would be my next question. So, it's not set in stone that it's going to be one entrance?
No.
One way in and one way out?
No.
To determine what's best and safe.
Yeah. I mean, at this point, it is really premature to, to make any assumptions about building placement, access points. I can say that the technical review committee process is, is a review process. So, staff and others would review the application that comes in with the plans that are submitted by the applicant. They're reviewed against the consistency for the Unified Development Ordinance.
Do these families have access to this on the web?
It will be, any application that comes in is...
But the UDO, the UDO...
The UDO is on our website. And any application that comes in is available for, for public inspection.
Yeah.
So, that sometimes appears to be no communication between the developer and the families. Is that correct?
When a, when an application comes in and it's conforming, it meets all of the Unified Development Ordinance provisions, there is no notification process. The notification process occurs during this stage when a rezoning is requested. I hope that answered your question.
So, from our standpoint, from City Council's standpoint, we, we can't guarantee that there'll be high-end nor senior apartments. We can't guarantee that. But what we can guarantee is that the, the UDO will put restrictions on a lot of the things that, that some of the commercial and multifamily in that vicinity were not restricted by. And, and it's, it's much more restrictive now than before, and things such as lighting, parking, buffering, those things are all predetermined in the UDO based on the scope and purpose of this use type. And, and the, and given the size, just clarify for the record for the minutes, if you would, what, what is the number of units that they could put in here?
So, the, the property is roughly 2.8 acres in size, going up to the max density, and this is not discounting any kind of access roads, streets, other, just strictly applying the 2.8 acres times the 24 units per acre, you're looking at roughly 64 units, 68 units, rather.
And if because of stormwater, there was retention mechanisms that had to be put in place, that's going to further limit the...
Certainly, parking would also limit the, the development. There's also an open space requirement for...
In the UDO, there's a open space.
In the UDO, 10% of the property would need to be reserved in open space. Half of that would be active, some form of active recreation. There's obviously setbacks for properties and buildings as well as other site configurations that would impact the total number of units.
So, the restrictions that we are concerned about because there is no site plan are actually very restrictive in our Unified Development Ordinance that was adopted. So, I think that's just, I want to be sure everybody's clear on that, because while we can't see it and there is no site plan, that is factual, there are predetermined restrictions that are going to be impactful to this development, and, and that was by intent when we created the UDO back at that point in time.
Just to my curiosity, the apartments across the street are, they under the same guidelines?
No, they were...
Explain the difference.
They were approved under a conditional residential rezoning. So, at that time, the UDO was not in place. The applicant may have come in with their own specific plan, similar to a planned development when somebody can come in today, but, but it's not the same standards of, of the Unified Development Ordinance.
That's restrictive.
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't know if you have access to this map, but I want to show it to you. What are they saying in the orange? Are they saying that this property is going to abut? Is that a property in that orange area?
Yep. Mr. Mopet, would you put clarification on that?
She's saying it was a property that was there. Is it a property in that location? Is it going to be right there on it? That's my question.
I believe, I believe this was, this small one is the one that was taken out.
Was, was the property that was removed?
That was originally, originally in the request and then removed.
Correct.
That part's gone.
Correct.
Any clarification on that?
Mr. Mopet, we've talked about several things concerning this. Is there anything you'd like to add clarification to, or?
Can I just add two points?
Sure.
In response, I, to a couple of your points, Mr. Mayor, and things that were raised in, in the public comments, I, overall, I just want to say that, that these requests don't come to you in a vacuum. The city has plans and policies that, that direct and shape the requests that you have before you today, and because we have a UDO that's 650 pages thick and laden with specific requirements, and because that UDO is designed to carry out a specific planning policy and a specific comprehensive plan that was adopted 10 years ago to last us until 2035, there's a, there's a lot behind this, and it's for the good of the city as a whole, it's for the good of the community as a whole. And when you see a request like this before you, where we're looking at a multifamily use that is intended for an age-targeted product, there's a reason for that, too, and it's, and it's a reason that this community needs, and it's the growth that we're experiencing. No one, no one can deny that. It's happening extremely quickly, and the planning that the city, the staff, you all have undertaken for the last 10-plus years to be prepared for that is why we have the UDO we have. And what allows for requests like this from property owners and developers who are willing and responsible and by the book is how you get to where we are this evening. Our, Alamance County is the fastest-growing county in the triad. It's one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. We all know that. Well, you know who the fastest-growing demographic in Alamance County is? It's the 65-plus age group.
Excuse me. Easy.
I love this. I, I've, I've learned to live by this Housing Needs Assessment that was, that was published only recently, and, Mr. Wall?
Thank you.
The data.
That's enough said.
The data doesn't lie. The 65-plus age group is growing staggeringly faster than any other demographic in Alamance County. I'm in the 35 to 44. We're going to grow by 5% by 2028. 65-plus is growing by 22% by 2028. I, you know, all motivations aside for why this product needs to be here, that... that's all you need to know. And the city was prepared for this. And the process that brought about those plans were community-facing and very long and very arduous and took into account a lot of community input, or at least provided the opportunity for a lot of community input. So I just wanted to provide that little bit of additional context when you think about what this means for the community and the city as a whole. Change is very difficult. I know that this is a hard decision for you all. And I believe me when I say I understand that this is difficult for the neighbors, this type of change. But we have plans and processes in place for responsible requests such as this one. And I trust that you all have taken that into account and will hope that you give it your favorable consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamie, I got a quick question. Can you tell me the difference between the D buffer and the C buffer?
Simply put, it's, D buffer is 40 feet width. And C buffer is 30 foot width.
Thank you.
Our buffers basically go from A to D in that sequence. The D buffer does allow...
Height? This is width we're talking about?
Mm-hmm. The depth.
Yep.
The depth. So from the property line in.
Okay, thank you.
And then setbacks are in addition to.
Correct.
So, and the process of us putting together a UDO, which the other properties around were not subject to, that was a three, was it a three-year process all total?
I was not here at that time, but I have heard, yes.
Harold says that, and he retired during the...
Yes, yeah.
There are others in the room that participated in that process, so...
It was a long time.
Yeah.
It was a long time, wasn't it, Bob? A lot of work went into that. So for the purpose of providing more restrictions to develop, so that it would be more compatible in our community, so... Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that has not had an opportunity to speak that would like to speak during the public hearing?
Lady back in the back, Mayor.
I spoke, but I would like to clarify. We've heard twice now that there were a number of meetings, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I would like to clarify that there have been twice, two comments made, that there were a number of meetings. There were not. The neighborhood as a whole met with Chad Huffin and Luccasina at the mall one time. We have had conversations after the many meetings that we have attended. And the only information we have been given is what he was allowed to tell us. So we still don't know much of anything.
But you said you had many meetings?
We had conversations, though the same things were reiterated. You know, I can't tell you this, I can't tell you that. It was a lot more of I can't tell you than this is what we're looking at. So I just want to clarify the lack of communication.
Sure, thank you.
That has been.
Well, what we do know is it's a 2.8 acre parcel that has 64 units max, based on our Unified Development Ordinance, and that the restrictions towards lighting, parking, buffering will be handled in the UDO. So we don't have a site plan. That's not what this is about, but we do know what's going there. It will be multifamily. So, anyone else that has not had an opportunity to speak this evening? Seeing none, council, I will entertain a motion to close public comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by a.
A.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Jamie, can you clarify what consistent with the land use plan, what that statement means? Did you say something?
No, Harold, no.
Sure. So, I'm not sure if I have it on. There you go. So we have a land use plan that is sort of bubble concept, it's not parcel-based, that has different land use categories. In this area, you can see it's regional commercial, which includes multifamily in its description, as well as other non-residential use types. Multifamily is considered, under the Building Code, a commercial use type, and it's reviewed that way. So when we were looking at consistency based upon the future land use designation, which is within our comprehensive plan, staff found it to be consistent based upon that.
All right, thank you.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
I just wanted a clarification so everyone understood what it meant, that it is consistent with the land use plan if it was approved. Regardless, it is a consistent use type, whether it is or isn't. Some, they not always are. So sometimes we're presented items that are not consistent. But in this case, it is.
What was it in P and Z? Be unanimous?
Four to one.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jamie or for the applicant?
Good. Good, Harold?
If I could just make one, a couple of comments. This is... When the UDO was put into place, gosh, it started, help me out, guys.
14.
Yeah, but even before then, the growth of the community was to a point where it was obvious what was going to occur. It already occurred in your neighborhood, Alamance Crossing. Let's be honest, okay? And then, one thing leads to another. If you think about it, the road that turns beside Red Devil Chick-fil-A comes back up around your neighborhood, goes into your neighborhood. You had hotels and motels built on the, facing the corridor, the 40 corridor. And then if you just continued up that road, you'll start seeing substantial development. At that point in time, offices, physician's offices, so forth. Senior housing. You saw a number of apartments being built. And as you continue in that area, you also saw condos and single-family residential units. All that was built. And that's part of what I think we all who are on the council saw then was going to be the growth of our community. It wasn't going to be just single-family lots with 2,000 or 3,000 square foot homes setting in neighborhoods. It was, this wasn't the case. And that's, that's, has gone, has only increased as time's gone on. This situation, what makes it so much more complicated was there was one piece of property that stuck right in the middle and nothing was done with for all these years. That sign up there for sale had been up there, I honest to God, at least for 15 years. And I remember always thinking, you know, what's the deal here? I mean, you simply got developed all around it, except it couldn't go 40 any further. I mean, it was all-around developed. Huge shopping center built, significant apartment complexes built. Commercial features there. And the traffic on that road, obviously, is substantial. We know that, that's for sure. So that's what makes this so difficult because it's really so unusual. It's like an enclave that's cut out. And the homes that you guys built are nice homes and nice residential community, but then you've got an open piece of property that was for sale for all those years. And at some point in time, you had had to come to a point where someone was going to try to put something there. And I know some people don't want to hear this, but it was inevitable it was going to have to occur at some point in time. The person who owned the property had a chance, he had an opportunity to sell it. It was to be developed. Now, the UDO, and I will say this, the UDO is a great instrument, but it's really, really complicated. And it's so complicated, it's hard to explain to people. There's so many variables involved. It's not like the old-fashioned black and white. You can do this, this, and this, and not this, this, and this. It's complicated, it is. But that was put in play for the reason knowing that communities was going to change. And I recall this vividly after tons of conversations in Raleigh with the legislature. Everyone knew the growth on I-40 on the corridor was going to occur, and it was going to occur quickly, and it was going to spread. So it was not going to be the situation where everyone went out, had their half-acre lots, built a home, kind of like the leaving-the-beaver days, and that's how every residential community was going to be. And that's what's occurred. Now, what makes this so unusual is you've got commercial, you've got apartments, you've got a nice residential community, and you've got a huge shopping center, all in one area there, okay? And then you've got this piece of property, which, as I said, that poor sign had been up for all those years that was for sale. And it's come to a point now where the, there's a buyer for the property, and obviously, the owner is willing to negotiate that. Now, how's it going to be developed? It's a question. We keep talking about mixed use, and mixed use comes in multiple forms. But the one thing that I believe if you go back and look, we mentioned about the growth of our population of age people. I'm included in one of those, who's still hanging on to a residential house with a yard and so forth to take care of. But the mixed, or the senior housing concept is the fastest-growing concept in this state because that population continues to grow. I think we live longer, and it's a different style of living. Since our last meeting, I actually called some people and went to some quote-unquote senior areas, privately owned. And some very close to your community, I may add. And I was just totally impressed with them. Beautiful construction. The one that I visited, the actual owner who built it still owns it. Parking directly beside the building in various ways. It was built in kind of an unusual site in terms of some slopes and so forth. They put it all together. They have tons of options that's really meant for the people who live there and people who visit the people who live there. I know people say, well, they're apartments. No, these are basically privately owned for a long-term contract, really nice units for people to live in. That's what I still see is the real growth period, a lot of what's going to happen in our central part of our city, any west borough going forward. Happened in McIntosh, Deloitte. These things, they're there. It's not just like it's in certain situations. And I don't know, this situation is so unusual because if you go with the traditional residential, I'm not sure how many homes you can get there, but you're not going to get a ton in that area right there because of the size of the property itself. So that's what puts us in an unusual situation where, I'm not sure we've been approached like this before, but it's one that you really have few options because you're basically got development on all sides. I mean, there's nowhere else to go. I mean, you've got this piece of property and things all around it. So what's going to go here now? And I think that's what will, should make our final decision in terms of what we believe would be appropriate zoning, but what can be constructed there. Now, Jamie can go into more detail on the UDO in terms of what we require of the builder, in terms of what they're going to do specifically, and this, and this, and that. That's what is complicated. And I do believe over the years, that's what confuses some people who are neighbors, wants to know, they want to know what's going to be built there and what's it going to look like? And who's going to live there? Well, you can't tell them all that. You don't know who's going to live there. But that's what makes this one, I think, I can understand everybody's heartburn about this. I'd be the same way. I'm going to be wrong. But that's exactly where we are in this situation now. So it's a, it's a tough process from the very beginning throughout the end, through P and Z. The developers has got to make a tough decision in terms of how much they want to pay for property and how much they want to invest in that property. Because to their defense, that's their business. They got to have a return on their investment. They simply do. If they buy that property, they got to have a return on their investment. Well, the... Most people do have a return on their investment. So my point, though, is it's a tough decision for what would be the most appropriate type of facility or development that goes there that would fit in the community as best as possible. And that's something I think we certainly have to decide here tonight or at a later meeting for that matter. But I just believe that the complexity of this, it sounds unusual. I will say one thing I said last time. My first house was on Hickory Avenue. Hickory Avenue is right across from Holly Hill Mall. We were there a year and a half, and guess what got built right across the street from us? Pretty large grocery store. That's where Harris cheated, that development came. Tell you, we used to go walk dogs in the woods across the street there, and the world's coming to an end, but guess what? It didn't come to an end. People still live there, and want to live there. So I understand change is hard. It is hard.
I think the other thing about this project, too, is it did start out with a wider scope. And then that scope was tailored down, and then that scope was reduced to one use. And that is the benefit for those that are concerned of general business limited use. Limited use means one use, one use type only. And that we know. Where general business would be multi, and they could have narrowed that down to a multitude, which they did on two separate occasions. But what makes this project really beholden to the UDO and not to the imagination is that it is one use. So we know what that one use is. So the UDO will restrict how it impacts those residents in that community, but there is no imagination when it comes to 39 uses or 62 uses or whatever it is, and what is going to go in there. It is one use and one use only. And that's the benefit of having a UDO that provides restrictions like, that are self-imposed, like general business limited use to one use. So, any other comments from council? Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion on item two, which would be on your pink sheet under option one.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezon property from medium-density residential, MDR, to general business limited use, GBLU. The assembly of properties is located on the south side of Garden Road with frontage on Westview Terrace. These partials consist of Alamance County tax identification numbers, 112636, 112637, 112656, and 112639. The motion is based on the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehension plan and that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehension plan, calls for this area to be regional commercial. This request is compatible with other residential zoning districts and land uses in the area which encourage a variety of housing options. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the general business limited use request only allows for multi-planning family residential development. Public infrastructure, water, and sewer is available along Garden Road. The property serves as a buffer between the commercial land uses along Garden Road and the adjacent residential neighborhood. Future use of the property should complement the land use pattern of the area and be, and be contact in... in, excuse me, sensitive to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's Unified Development Ordinance.
So we have a motion to approve as it is consistent with the land use plan as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Thank you, everyone, for all the time and energy that went into that.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to new business this evening. Item three was tabled until our April 14th work session. Public comments, there are no public comments this evening. City council comments, a couple of items. Saturday, March 22nd is going to be a household-generated waste-only collection day. No commercial or business waste is accepted. That's going to be at the Burlington Fire Training Facility. Gary, is that right? Items that will be accepted are, and this is actually, we get asked this question a lot, and believe it or not, I get asked this question a lot on the radio show, where can we take these things? So if you have sensitive types of hazardous waste, that can be handled on March 22nd, Saturday, March 22nd. Household cleaners, pesticides, just a ton of items, and certainly Gary could clarify that if anybody's got any questions. What will not be accepted is explosives. So if you have explosives that don't work, or electronics, or anything radioactive. So I'm glad city staff is doing that, and that Public Works is doing that, so that'll be on March 22nd. And then on March 20th, there's going to be a downtown water and sewer project update meeting. That's going to be from 5:30 to 6:30. That's downstairs, Beverly? Is that right? Is that going to be on Zoom also? Do we know?
It's in-person. It's, we mailed out postcards to our MSD districts.
Okay.
So it's a kind of a focused group of folks.
Okay.
But we'll have information that we're putting out about the project.
Well, obviously, we're getting ready to start a pretty major project, thanks to the state of North Carolina and $10 million of allocated funding to help us with our 80-year-old infrastructure downtown. So we're very fortunate, but that project's getting ready to begin, and it is going to be the beginning of many impactful improvements in downtown, and more to be heard about that on March 20th, 5:30 to 6:30 downtown. If you have any questions, please contact our city clerk or city staff, and they'll be glad to answer those. Any other council comments? I think there has been a request for closed session. Mr. Huffman?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that council to postpone closed session. This time, this is CBS 143, 318, 1184, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industry and road businesses in the area, sort of by the public body, including the 1055 economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body. Negotiations for some of the entities, CBS 2.58, 7.1. Number two, UCBS 143, 318, 1183, for the purpose of considering and instructing legal counsel on the handling of claims against the city and the public. Gretchen Brusoff versus Kenneth Odoman, Alamance County Superior Court, 24, CBS 474. Two, Christopher Barrett versus Travis, 4 Alamance County District, 144, CBS 4685. Three, Andrew Crocker, East Carolina, and all, City of Austin, and all, Alamance County Superior Court, 22, CBS 4.
So there is a request to go into closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Start moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This time, council will move to closed session.